Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, December 11, 2019. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair on this committee. With me at the dais are councilmembers Palmisano, Johnson, Councilmember Goodman, Ellison, Schrader, Council President Bender, also Councilmember Fletcher, Connel, and Cunningham, and Councilmember Gordon. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And on today's agenda, we have three items and reports of committees. And in addition to a couple of late additions to the agenda, so let's first dispense with the consent agenda and the Race Equity Subcommittee agenda. Item number one is an amendment to the business license approved by council last month. There was a clerical error made in that license, so in order to get this addressed as soon as possible, we're taking it up at this committee so that it can be considered at Friday's City Council meeting. And then item number two is the appointment of election judges for the special primary and general election to be held early next year in House District 60A. And under the Race Equity Subcommittee agenda, item number three consists of two appointments to fill unexpired terms on the Race Equity Committee Advisory, Community Advisory Committee. And I move approval of all three items. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. And then next, we have two late additions to the printed agenda. One is a staff direction from Councilmember Connel. The other is a resolution regarding refugee resettlement. I'll first call on Councilmember Connel to present the staff direction related to the Restorative Justice and Adult Diversion Work Group.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And today, colleagues should have in front of them a staff direction with a little bit of an orange text on the upper right corner that says "Final." So this is to codify the work that has been happening for a few months now, to try to go above and beyond outreach services for folks who are struggling with drug addiction, chemical dependency, commercial sexual exploitation, and other low-level drug offenses in our communities. So this was originally brought forward as an idea by our former city attorney, Susan Siegel, who had been exposed to the LEED program, which is cited in here. LEED is a trademarked name and program, so we're not able to call our program that. But we do have the ability to work with them in strong partnership to set the foundations of what could be some pretty impactful work. So I'll go ahead and read the staff direction and then stand for any questions. This says, "Directing the City Attorney's Office in collaboration with the Minneapolis Police Department to convene and lead the Restorative Justice and Adult Diversion Work Group tasked with developing a wraparound services and harm reduction pilot program that addresses livability offenses such as but not limited to street-level drug sales and commercial sexual exploitation. This work group will include representatives from the Office of Violence Prevention, the City Coordinator's Human Trafficking Prevention Initiative, and the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. The pilot program will utilize technical assistance from the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion's LEED, acronym is LEED, National Support Bureau to lay the foundations of the pilot program and provide training to city staff and community partners. This will center a strong collaboration between the Minneapolis Police Department and social service providers to address the root causes of the livability offenses. Use a proactive, consistent, and culturally relevant case management model coupled with a timeline, budget, clear metrics, and goals that show evidence-based progress towards a reduction in crime and increased community safety. And engage Hennepin County and other government agencies to strengthen the pilot program's service delivery and diversify its funding sources. The work group will report its recommendations to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee no later than April 1, 2020, to launch a pilot program by June 1, 2020." I will give credit to many of the staff, city staff, who helped to create this staff direction. Lots of hands were involved in this, and eyes and thinking as well. And so the City Attorney's Office, the Budget Office, the Mayor's Office, our Clerk's Office, and, you know, the Office of Violence Prevention, the Director of that unit, that division, and did have some questions about NCR's involvement here. And so just to contextualize that a bit, some of you might remember that throughout the iterations of the Collaborative Safety Strategies Program, which began under that name years ago, and now has a different name and a different funding source, there has been different city departments that have touched that money, that have implemented that money in community, that have received grant applications for that program, that have developed partnerships with nonprofits that serve under that program. So all of that experience that lives both within the Office of Violence Prevention as well as the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department now, we want to bring that together to the table to help craft this initiative. Additionally, NCR has cultural community outreach specialists that are in active conversations daily, weekly, relating to some of the communities that are faced with these challenges, whether it's the opioid crisis, needles on the ground, or, you know, folks who are being targeted for robberies and the such. So all of that information, we want to be a part of this initiative and be able to connect multiple city departments to be able to work out of those silos and together to really support this program to have a successful effort. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Connel. Are there any questions? Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really more of a comment. I just want to thank Councilmember Connel for making her staff available to answer questions that I had through my staff, and also I had the chance to talk to the interim city attorney. And it sounds like a lot of this work, as Councilmember Connel said, is really building off of diversion programs that we have developed throughout the city enterprise, really a lot of under the leadership of our former city attorney, Susan Siegel, and even perhaps integrating with our co-responder program. The City Attorney's Office said that they were happy to be the lead department for this for now, but in the future, depending on where the diversion happens, the City Attorney's Office may or may not be the right place because the diversion may actually happen before an individual really gets into the criminal justice system. That's kind of the intention here. So I just wanted to voice my support for this work, and I think sometimes stuff is coming through Committee of the Whole toward the end of the year as we ramp up our city's business. So while this may be a little, you know, a tiny bit unusual to have something that has come to Committee of the Whole, I think it's because of the timing related to the end of the year. And I think it sets us up well to take on this work, again, that's really related to things that are already happening. I know the City Attorney's Office had a chance to go out to Seattle, some staff there, and learn about the program that they're doing. So thanks to Councilmember Connel for taking this initiative to build on that work.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. I also just want to thank Councilmember Connel for bringing this forward. I know this is something that you've been working on and working with the city attorney on, and I appreciate your leadership and appreciate the presentation that we got on this in public safety so that we could start to really get our heads around what this has the potential to be. You know, as with any program launch, it's going to really come down to the execution and a lot of choices that we make about how we implement this and how we actually get it into action. So we've got a lot more work to do. This is the beginning and not the end of the conversation, but I'm very excited about the potential of this. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll put myself in queue. Just to say again, we did get a presentation on this in the Public Safety Committee, and it does appear to be a really promising program that could potentially help, not only help our residents, but help to shift the direction of the department and the culture of the Minneapolis Police Department, you know. And certainly, we understand that police officers are not social workers. However, this provides some opportunity for them to be seen in a more, I think, human light and have the opportunity for them to really play the helping role in our community that we hope that our police department plays. So I will be supporting this staff direction as well. All those in favor, seeing no more comments, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. We also have a resolution before us from Councilmember Fletcher. Ms. Michelle Rivera from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department has a brief presentation. Welcome, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you, Committee Chair Jenkins. My name is Michelle Rivera, Director of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs for the City of Minneapolis. I also want to introduce someone who's in the audience, Ben Whalen, with the Minnesota Council of Churches, one of the refugee resettlement agencies, in the event that there are additional questions regarding this resolution. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Fletcher for your leadership and your motivation in moving this resolution forward. I'm just providing some quick orientation regarding the reason for this resolution and the need for this resolution. In late September of this year, the President issued an executive order, Executive Order Number 13888, entitled Enhancing State and Local Involvement in Refugee Resettlement. This executive order changes dramatically the system of resettling refugees into the United States from a system that is coordinated through state refugee resettlement offices to a system in which counties and states indicate their ascent, whether they are willing to accept refugees in their jurisdictions. This subject was the subject of an article that was in the Star Tribune earlier this week, as counties across the state of Minnesota are deciding whether or not they choose to admit refugees or not. While at present, cities are not required to issue a statement on whether they're willing to accept refugees or not, the additional support of city resolutions is very important because the more voices that are raised in support of refugee resettlement, the better. That is the majority of what I wanted to say with regard to this resolution, except for the fact that December 18 is International Migrants Day. So from the standpoint of timeliness, it's very timely to submit a resolution of this type in support of migrants to the United States, including refugees. I'm available for any questions that councilmembers may have.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins, and thank you, Ms. Rivera, for your quick work on this. I'll just note for my colleagues that we are a council that has an abundance of enthusiastic support for being a welcoming city for refugee resettlement, and I invite everybody to add their name to this by the time it gets to full council on Friday. There's, literally, it was a matter of timing that's the reason that my name is on this for today, but I'm aware that there are a lot of people who would have brought this forward. And I just want to thank my constituents who prompted me to ask the question, are we already doing this? After they saw the stories about other counties sort of having this debate. And so I asked the question, and we realized that there was an opportunity here for us to make a statement that would feel important in this ongoing debate as we're in a moment of some frustrating federal action on who belongs here, and wanting to make sure that we're really clear about who we think belongs here. So I appreciate everybody's support for this, and just get in touch with me if you'd like to add your name to the resolution before Friday. You are more than welcome, and the more the merrier.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Gordon?
Well, I was just going to ask to have my name added, but it's, Denny, I should get in touch with you later, but this is now. Yeah, I think that we probably all want our name added to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any other? Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I want to add my name to this as well, and I thank Councilmember Fletcher, and I thank Director Rivera for the good work. As a child refugee, I understand what this means to a lot of people, and especially the fact that there's over 70 million people today seeking refuge around the world. And America was a country that was built by immigrants, so I thank you for this work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami, are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would invite our guest, Mr. Whalen, to maybe share a few thoughts about this resolution.
Thank you, Council. I don't have prepared remarks. I just want to thank you all for continuing to make this city one that welcomes everyone. As one of the five resettlement agencies in Minnesota, we have our work cut out for us right now to continue to establish this as a state that welcomes refugees and really people, and be inclusive of all people. Minneapolis over the last five years has had over 1,000 people resettle in its borders. Certainly, we are asking, Hennepin County, and I understand they are working on resolving this at their level as well, as dictated by the President at this moment, and we need their support too. So we appreciate your welcome and your continued desire to see this city welcome, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? I certainly want to add my name to this resolution, and I will call on Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. So I think if I understand procedurally, what we want to do here is we want to move this forward from this committee for consideration at the full council. And just want to clarify that we'll consider this a draft, so we have an opportunity if anybody has minor language tweaks or wants to add their names between now and Friday. So I'll move this for approval from this committee so that it can move forward and we can vote on it at the full council on Friday.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just ask maybe for procedural clarity. Using our normal procedures, maybe councilmembers can contact Councilmember Fletcher and the clerk if they would not like their name added to the resolution. I'll just assume if you do not, that you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And with that, all in favor of this draft motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. Thank you again, Ms. Rivera, and Councilmember Fletcher. Next, we will receive reports from standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council. And we'll begin with the Budget Committee, the very active Budget Committee chaired by Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I will mention that we had budget markup last Friday. The one item that we are forwarding is the 2020 city budget, and I want to mention that this is going to tonight's meeting, different than all the other committees today. So I don't think people have any questions. You were all there at markup. So thank you for a very, thank you for such a smooth running of the budget markup process. I really appreciate the collaboration and the way everybody was engaged. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Palmisano. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would just commend Councilmember Palmisano on her leadership in managing the budget process this year as well as the Budget Committee. I thought it was a very transparent and engaged process, to put it mildly. I think we had close to 200 people show up at public hearings thus far, and we have yet another public hearing tonight. And so that really speaks to this council's willingness to hear from the residents of the city of Minneapolis. And I think that's to be commended, as well as managing the very challenging process of hearing from so many of our community members. So thank you very much, Chair Palmisano. Our next committee report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee report given by Chair Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. EDRS is bringing 15 items forward for approval on Friday. Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are new licenses. Item 5 is the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, and item 6 is the Emergency Housing Repair Ordinance. Item 7 is a food manufacturer's license revocation as a result of not paying taxes. Item number 8 are the license approvals, and 9 are gambling license approvals. 10 are business license operating conditions for door-in companies. Item 11 is business license operating conditions for Mills City Massage. Item 12 is a workforce development services contract. It's an RFP. Item 13 is an interim lease agreement with North Star Community Rowing. And item 13 is the pre-development forgivable loan for a project at 345 East 38th Street with a number of additional addresses. Item number 15 is working in partnership with the state with regard to their geo-bond issuance for the family partnership project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on items 1 through 15.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I failed to announce we had been joined by Councilmember Worsami. My apologies, but please let the record reflect that he is in attendance. And our next committee report is the Enterprise Committee, given by Chair Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are five items from this committee being forwarded to council for Friday. They are all contract amendments. Item number 1 is a contract amendment with Everlaw for additional use of its e-discovery and redaction software. Item number 2 is for outsourced managed services to OneNet, our IT provider. Item number 3 is a contract amendment for the Minneapolis Convention Center parking ramp system. Item number, the payment system, rather. Item number 4 is a contract with West Publishing for MPD database efforts. And item number 5 is a contract amendment from HR with a vendor called Newvest to dispense with this year's queue of workplace investigations. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmisano. Are there any questions? The next committee report is the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by Chair Gordon.
Thank you very much, Vice President Jenkins. The Housing Policy and Development Committee will be bringing forward eight items for consideration. The first is a land sale at 1337 Newton Avenue North. The second is a series of land sales and funding awards for the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance Round Four. This is rather significant. I won't read through all the addresses. There's 52 different addresses, and over 48 lots that will be sold for development to nine separate developers. I think all of these are in wards 4 and 5. 48 of them are for the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance, but there's four of them that are part of our missing middle pilot program, so there'll also be three duplexes and one triplex, and the others are single-family homes that will be developed. Lots of different designs and models and some innovative energy-saving and green-oriented projects as well. The third item on the agenda is a modification to our housing redevelopment tax increment financing plan. This is modification number 3. Fourth item is confirming appointments to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. These are mere reappointments. The fifth item is a resolution authorizing the carryforward of unused 2019 tax exempt housing revenue bonds. The sixth item is transferring a redevelopment contract with Blue Gold Ventures to Great Lakes Property Group. This is for the property at 756 Jackson Street Northeast. The seventh item is accepting bids for property maintenance mowing and snow removal services. And the eighth item is the adopting and amended and restated Unified Housing Policy that includes provisions having to do with inclusionary zoning requirements. Happy to take questions on any of those.
Thank you, Chair Gordon. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none, then our next committee report will be the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by its chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee is going to be bringing forward 10 items for approval on Friday. The first is around invasive tree species ordinances and a staff direction. Item number 2 is environmental program fee ordinance that will essentially locate existing environmental fees and amend various provisions to refer to a new chapter and update to ensure compliance with state law changes and for accuracy and clarity. Item number 3 is approving the Commission on Civil Rights Appointments. Item number 4 is a gift acceptance for the, excuse me, for the Deputy Commissioner of Health to attend and receive the appreciative inquiry change leadership certificate. Item number 5 is another gift acceptance. Item number 6 is approving the appointments to the Workplace Advisory Committee. Item number 7 is approving appointments to the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council. Item number 8 is passage of a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Item number 9 is passage of a resolution establishing the social cost of carbon for use in energy and climate policy. And item number 10 is passage of a resolution adopting a sustainable building policy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. Are there any questions? Any questions? No questions. The next committee report is the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by Chair Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Committee will be forwarding 13 items. Item 1 and 2 are street reconstruction projects. Item 3 is the speed limit ordinance, a series of actions to have staff come back with their analysis and other directions under subitem 3. Item 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 are all contract amendments with ongoing work with the department. 9 is request for proposal for engineering services for Bryant Avenue South Project. 10 and 11 are seeking grants for pipelining and mobility hubs, respectively. 12 is the 2020 Street Resourcing Program, and there's a list of designated project sites. And the final 13 was a report on the 2020-2022 Minneapolis Vision Zero Action Plan Update. I'll stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll go to the next committee report, the Ways and Means Committee, given by Chair Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 18 items for approval on Friday. Item number 1 is the Capital Long Range Improvement Program Ordinance. Item number 2 is a legal settlement. Item number 3 is a worker's compensation interest payment. Item number 4 is a grant from the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District to fund downtown strategic justice partnership. Item number 5 is a contract amendment with Urban Ventures. Item number 6 is a waiver of conflict of interest for Frederickson &amp; Byron, PA. Item number 7 is a folk and traditional arts grant for arts programming to support artistic traditions and customs practiced within cultural groups. Item number 8 is a contract amendment with Pioneer Power, Inc., for Convention Center steam room cooling project. Item number 9 is a contract amendment with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for operations of the commons. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with Impact Mailing of Minnesota, Inc., for mailing services. Item number 11 is a contract amendment- Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Association for Black Economic Power for provision of banking services and financial literacy education for Minneapolis residents. Item number 12 is a contract amendment with Canal Street Limited Partnership for Office Space in the Crown Roller Mill Building. Item number 13 is a contract amendment with HCM Architects for the Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project Phase 2. Item number 14, which was sent forward with that recommendation, is a rebid for Fire Station Number 4 renovations. Item number 15 is an appointed position in the Finance Department, and this is for the Director of Investments and Debt Management. Item number 16 is an urban area security initiative grant for enterprise preparedness services. Item number 17 is an emergency management performance grant for training and exercise services. And the final item, item number 18, is a 2019 Justice Assistance Grant for police and city attorney support. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Worsami. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move to the Zoning and Planning Committee report, given by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward eight items for approval. The first is the granting of an appeal at 1309 Fifth Street Northeast. Second is the approval of an alley vacation at 1401 1413 and 1425 Chicago Avenue. The third is the approval of a rezoning and alley vacation at 1527 East Lake Street, 3013 through 3037 Bloomington Avenue South, as well as 3010 through 3040 16th Avenue South. Number 4 is the approval of appointments to the Arts Commission. Number 5 is the passage of a historical landmark designation for 213 Ninth Street South. Number 6 is the passage of an ordinance on occupancy regulations. Number 7 is the passage of inclusionary zoning regulation ordinance. And number 8 is granting of an appeal for 4159 Hiawatha Avenue. All those will be brought forward Friday with the exception of number 3, where I will move for a continuance. The applicant is still working with staff to make sure they meet requirements, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? No questions. Our last committee report is the Executive Committee report, given by the vice chair of that committee, Councilmember Bender. Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item to forward from the Executive Committee, and that is to set the public hearing regarding the reappointment of the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. That will be referred to the Committee of the Whole to set that public hearing during that first meeting of this committee next year.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, that concludes our business for today, and we are adjourned.